Or turn them off, please. We had some interference last night, but I don't think it was from the audience. Uh, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Billingsley.
Here.
Bone.
Here.
Childress.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Headley.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Williams.
Here. And we do have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
All right, call this meeting to order, and I'd ask Commissioner Childress if he will give us invocation, and Commissioner Bone will then lead us into pledge. If you'll stand, please.
Pray with me. Father, we love you and we thank you for loving us always. Where we ask forgiveness where we failed you, we ask the Holy Spirit to visit us now to give us wisdom as we do the county's business. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. Uh, before we start, we had a death of one of our employees, Father, this afternoon, kind of suddenly. If y'all would, keep Kyle Dennis and his family in your prayers. Okay, uh, we've had roll call, we have a quorum. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
So here's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bone, second by Commissioner Hall. Any discussion, any additions or deletions?
I'm gonna object to the agenda approval. I want the, the, under consent, number three, section D, resolution to approve purchase of new vehicle be removed from consent.
All right, you want to move D, under number three, remove from consent and move down to new business, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any objection?
I'll second that.
No, you don't have to second it. Nobody objects, you don't have to. Any objections to doing that? Okay, any other additions or deletions? Uh, under me, I apologize, I left my notes on the rules and procedures change I had. I swapped trucks this afternoon, and it's in my truck, so I want to remove, uh, the first bullet point under me, please, rules and procedures. Any other additions or deletions?
I'm gonna add a reminder about severe weather tax holiday under me.
Okay. All right, anything else? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please raise your hand. All opposed? No opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll come down to organizational reports since we have no public comments. Uh, Connie Bainbridge or Chris Williams?
Yeah, yeah, good evening.
How you doing?
Fine, Harry, all this evening.
Are we good?
Good deal, good deal. And, and good evening, Chris Montgomery with Central Access. Um, Connie apologizes for not being able to be with us this evening. She has something going on, so, and I know she, uh, would like to be here, but unable to this evening. If I may, I've got some information for you guys, um, for all of y'all.
All right.
Um, so we-
And I apologize, you're not a Williams, you're a Montgomery. Now you're dead.
Well, you're trying to claim me, and that's okay.
Well, that depends on what you tell us tonight.
I'm not sure if that's okay.
He's a Williams tonight, evidently some of-
Yeah, I know it.
Uh, so we do have a, uh, we've got a map that's been updated since the last time I was here, and, uh, we do have a press release that is ready to go, and that will be going out, so just wanna make sure you guys see all this that's current. I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Here, thank you. There you go. And just in there? Thank you. Yes, sir. Dry fingers this time, anyway. Can't do the paperwork. All right, here we go. All right, so y'all bear with me, I apologize, we do have a lot of others to go through, but again, I wanted to give you guys a good update as far as where Central Access is, as far as placing fiber throughout Chilton County. So if we look at the map, and we'll stop from the top on your legend and work our way down. I would have liked to started with the green, but unfortunately, the green wasn't on top. Um, the, the hashed area, which is kind of a light gray, uh, with the lines through that, that was originally part of the grant that we received through ADECA. Um, afterwards, ADECA did realize that there's another provider in that area, and so they did remove that section from us. So with that, we'll be working around that. We'll be placing fiber within that area, but within that hashed area, again, we'll, currently will not be placing any fiber. All right. Um, so if I may move down to the green area, the dark green area, that's currently where everything that Central Alabama Electric, Central Access currently serves. So if you're in the dark green area, you're able to get service now. As we move down, the yellow area, which you'll see on the Highway thirty-one corridor, that is the area that we'll have ready for service, uh, here at the first quarter twenty twenty-five. So some of that's being turned up now. We're in the process of splicing that. So all the fiber should be placed, so we should be splicing now, and then we'll start releasing those areas as we can. Back up, there's one area, there's a couple of areas there that are green that have the, um, pink outline. Since the last meeting, those are areas that have become active. I wanted to point those out. So since the last meeting, we, we have activated those areas. Again, that's the green with the pink outline around it.
Those areas, however, have connections to-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and those are now active and ready to connect, yes, sir. And, and we have been connecting people within those areas, yes, sir. Um, the next one there, of course, we were just on the yellow. We moved to the light blue. That light blue area is Maplesville down to the Plantersville area. That's what's coming up, uh, second quarter twenty twenty-five. Um, and so that's, we currently have crews working within that area, so again, we'll continue to build out that. Um, the, the brown area, uh, around that is all Ardauf, um, grants. So again, some of those will be, we'll be working though at that in conjunction, but again, that's what we're working on there within those areas. Um, then we get down to the pink area. I've got first quarter twenty twenty-six. Um, that is down toward Verbena area, so we'll be working on that. Um, again, we have crews somewhere in that area, but we'll be working on that to turn up by first quarter twenty twenty-six. If, I think I missed fourth quarter twenty twenty-five, which is that dark red area within, um, Chilton County, within the Clanton area. We have that scheduled there. We do have crews in that area now. Uh, some of that will be aerial, some of that's buried, so we'll be, again, working there. Yes, sir.
What are the, is that, uh, is this the same red that's over here along the Highway twenty-two on the river? Um, you said it, uh-
Yes, sir, it is.
Mainly Clanton, so that's the same, those would be done at the same timeframe?
Yes, sir, that's, 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 yes, sir, fourth quarter twenty twenty-five. Um, some of that will, um, come up sooner, so the area within Clanton probably be ready quicker. Uh, and then as you get over into this area on the, um, on the east side, I do have that it's fourth quarter twenty twenty-five, yes, sir. All right. Um, again, mentioned the Ardauf a moment ago, that's the orange area. Again, we'll be working on that as we're working all of this, um, area here. Um, that was a grant that we were, um, fortunately able to get through the, uh, FCC, I do believe is what it is. So we working on those areas, they are trying to finish that up. So that is all that we have within Central Access. I did wanna point out, uh, the northwest corner of the county, that area is served by AT&amp;T and Charter, so there is services available within that area, and that's, uh, according to the ADECA and the FCC map. Uh, and then on the northwest corner, um, that is currently served by Century Tail.
Northeast corner, you mean?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you. The northeast corner. And so that's what's in that area. So I say all that, as we finish all the grant construction that we're doing, add that to the green area, Central Access will be providing service to about seventy-five percent of Chilton County. Now, as you look at the rest of Chilton County, as you add in, um, AT&amp;T and Charter in the northwest, and then Century Tail in the northeast, uh, that then covers about ninety-four percent of Chilton County. Uh, with, with what F, but the, uh, new FCC, uh, guidelines refer to as a one hundred down, two, twenty up as far as the speeds, uh, for broadband service. So at that point, as we finish up combining all that, it'll be about ninety-four percent of Chilton County that will have broadband service available.
So this is gonna be the last mile everybody in Chilton County when it's completely done in your area?
So within the green area and the grant areas, yes, sir. We'll be, we'll have that finished up on our, all of our grants and then the Ardauf areas there. So yes, sir.
Okay, and this question you may or may not ac, can answer, may not even want to answer. But discussions I had with some at ADECA about Century Tail, which is now Brightspeed-
Yes, sir.
Was they were gonna look at their performance record, and they've had a grant, this is gonna be their fourth year of a ten-year grant came, and they have not, they have not met their grant-
Mm-hmm.
requirements. And I thought what they said, y'all might get that area. Has there been any discussion on that?
So we have talked to ADECA, and, um, they've asked us to help where we can. Our first obligation has been to finish these grant areas here, and then from there, we'll have to look at other areas and then really determine if, if it's doable at that point. But at the moment, our obligation is to finish up, uh, all these areas that are currently cluttered, cluttered here that you see. So we haven't looked at all these other areas.
I guess where I'm going is- Is there anything we can do as a body or individually to talk to ADECA and explain to them what our people are telling us in these areas, and maybe get y'all a leg up, or somebody else a leg up besides these people?
Yes, sir. Um, I, we did talk to ADECA as far as, um, understanding that process, and they said that with that being, um, a Ardauf awarded area, uh, they, they basically have to allow that timeframe to go through to then make it to the next step.
So it's the feds?
It, sir-
It's the feds?
It is, yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Are you carrying a bomb?
I have, it sounded like it. I apologize. Chris, I know, I know you represent, um, a different company, but any idea of the timeline that is up there in the northwest corner in the purple?
So the major, actually, that purple area now, it currently has, it's according to the F, again, according to ADECA, that area has service. Uh, the black dots that I do show, um, that are outside of that purple area, um, are, those are FCC address points. So that particular area is, they're saying does not have service. So, uh, certainly the hope would be that those providers up in that area would be taking care of that.
So the light green on the right, that, uh, are we interpreting that, those people to have service?
And the, again, the, the light, according to, again, the, um, the FCC data that we have, that the green area on the, uh, the light green area on the east side, um, that has service, but then those black dots does not. That is, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. There's one, I don't see a legend for this, I don't know if we're gonna call it green, along I sixty-five at the, uh, Chevy County line. See that lighter colored area? Is it something I'm missing over here in your legend as far as-
If I may.
It's not covered at all.
So what they're saying there is there's, there's, according to the map, there's no one that lives in that area, so the FCC or ADECA didn't identify anyone in those areas.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I've, I've had that same question as well.
Hmm, we got three or four different areas then.
Yeah, and the, um, the southwest corner as well, there's fewer spots down there, um, where there's people living.
Yeah, the national forest.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I addressed a concern with Connie. Anybody got any other comments or questions about the connections?
No.
Glad to see y'all. Can't wait to get hooked up.
Yeah, thank y'all so much. We're looking forward to the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm waiting on it too. The, did Connie discuss you the question I called her about last Friday on what I call the pullout boxes? I think they're splicing boxes.
Is that, I believe you spoke with, uh, Jimmy Gray about?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Uh, has he contacted our engineer and the road department to address those?
Yes, sir, my understanding is they have, and they're working with them to, uh, make the change what's there, and then going forward to ensure that, um, the permits or everything's in place, uh, to move forward. But yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Yeah. My goal is not to slow this down because that happens to be on the road my shop is on, and I want the service.
Sir.
Uh, so I'm not trying to slow it down, but there's issues there. We don't want to have to come back and somebody to replace it because a grater blade hits a box that's right on the edge of the road, so-
Yes, sir.
That was my only concern. But if we got an agreement, everybody's got an understanding, so we don't have an interruption in service somewhere down the road.
And that makes perfect sense, yes, sir.
Okay, well, uh, I appreciate this update, and I hope it helps people who've been calling.
Chairman, can I, oh, Mr. Montgomery, can, is there a way that you can get this emailed to our office in a PDF form so we can get it on our website, maybe?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
To inform the public, 'cause they can't, even though we're filmed, they can't see the colors and the legend and all that, so-
Absolutely.
If we could, if we could get that, so we can get it out.
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. And then, of course, with that, um, centralaccess.com, uh, if you go onto the map, you can see where it's available, and you can see also the legend in there, but no, I agree, getting this PDF would be better.
Well, you can also put in your address and get an idea of when you can be hooked up. Is that not right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got any questions, any more discussion?
Very good. Thank you all.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy to be back again.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll get Connie here next time as well.
Okay. Okay, that brings us down to consent agenda that we have amended. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bone. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? There is none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention, Commissioner Childress. Okay, uh, it brings us down to Road Department. Nope, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, I need to read this, don't I? All right, consent agenda includes the minutes, claim- Y'all pardon my compadres up here. Claims list, uh, resolution from the Revenue Commissioner's Office, reclassify Michelle Headley's at the Appraisal Department, resolution to approve pay raise for Angela Fulmer in Revenue Department, and Kyle Dennis in the Appraisal Department, resolution to advertise the fill of vacancy in the property tax clerk, resolution to approve the, uh, resolution to approve this surplus and sale of the twenty-ten Ford Explorer under transit, resolution to approve a new hire, Vanessa Stone, as full-time Transit Operator One, and request a resolution for the Chairman to sign all documents relating to the yearly fiscal year twenty-six grant applications. Under the Road Department, resolution to approve selected J M Wood, a proposal option for disposal of surplus. Okay, it was not removed. Okay, we'll remove that. All right, resolution to approve and submit rebuild Alabama annual grant for improving portion of Kenner Road forty-two, resolution to advertise to fill administrative assistant position at the Road Department, resolution to advertise, under the, uh, Parks Department, resolution to advertise and fill vacancies for one, full-time parks and recreation assistant manager, one full-time parks and recreation caretaker slash CSR, three part-time parks and recreation caretaker slash CSR, and amend the budget for the parks under animal control, resolution to approve new hire, Victoria Cup as full-time animal control technician two, Brianna Santos as full-time animal control technician one, Brittany Kulas as full-time animal control technician one. That's the end of consent agenda, and we've already approved it, and I apologize for not reading it in advance. Now, staff reports, uh, Commission Office.
Uh, yes, as we discussed last night, um, the resolution to, I would be asking for a resolution to approve the petty cash policy for animal control.
All right, do I have anyone making that motion? I still move. Motion by Commissioner Childress. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bone. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, uh, what kind of, uh, total we're talking about, like?
Uh, the, the total that we'll keep in there is a hundred dollars, and it's just to make change when people pay in cash.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, and it passes unanimously.
Um, tonight is our second meeting for, uh, nominations on the Chilton-Clanton Library Board, and my name has gone away.
It's Paula Mitchell.
Paula Mitchell. Has been recommended.
All right, the Library Board has recommended Paula Mitchell. Do I have anyone wanting to make that nomination?
I'll make that nomination.
Okay, Paula Mitchell has been nominated. Any other nominations? All right, then we'll hold the nominations open until our next meeting, and then we'll approve a appointment to that board.
Uh, the next is the credit card policy. Um, as you'll see, there's, uh, uh, basically it is a five thousand dollar limit individual, uh, purchase. There's a ten thousand dollar monthly limit. Uh, this is specifically for, um, online reservations for, uh, classes or, um, anything to do with conference or rooms or anything like that. That's the purpose of the credit card.
Okay, I do have a motion to approve the credit card policy.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Billingsley. Do I have a second?
Second, please.
Second by Commissioner Childress. Any discussion?
Uh, who did we decide to get it wrong?
Uh, that, that is in my next, uh, request.
I didn't see, oh, okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously.
Um, after, um, contacting, uh, a couple of banks that we already do, uh, business with, uh, the, uh, First Bank of Alabama, um, they, um, they don't, uh, this is not a third party to them. They process their own credit cards. Uh, they came up with, to me, the best deal to be had. There's not to be, interest rate was not an issue, because we pay it at the end of the month, so I'll be asking for, uh, approval to, uh, apply for the credit card with First Bank of Alabama.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the credit card at First Bank of Alabama?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, second by Commissioner Billingsley. Now-
Didn't, did you say that this, uh, has a cash back reward on this credit card?
Oh, yes, it does. It does.
What percent was that?
One point five.
Okay.
It's one point five points per dollar.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So we make money by spending, or using the credit card.
Wow.
I've heard that before.
Oh, yeah, Sears and Roebuck. All kind of discussions. All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, and it passes unanimously.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, that's all from the Commission Office, and it's the only staff reports we have. Uh, now we have the new business that we pulled from the consent agenda, and that would be, uh, resolution to purchase a new vehicle for the Appraisal Department that was budgeted and approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five reappraisal budget. The quote was acquired from McSweeney Auto Group, who go over the state bid for fleet vehicles. Do I have a motion on this?
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this.
I have a motion from Commissioner Perkins to table this till our next meeting?
Yes.
Till our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Childress. Uh, and that's no discussion on table motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all in favor of tabling till our next meeting, raise your hand. All opposed, and it's passed unanimously. All right. Thank you, Ben, for reminding me of that. Okay, Commissioner Billingsley.
I do not have anything, but I have a question for you.
Put him on the spot.
When it comes to your turn, are you gonna update everybody about the decision of the cattle barn right now?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm gonna give them what, where we are right now with it, yeah. That was, that's why it's still on the agenda.
Well, I'm gonna let you handle that.
Okay, uh, you have nothing else?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bone?
The only, the only thing I got is, uh, I'm proud to say that our courthouse, new courthouse project is underway. And I was told it's gonna be about a sixteen-month project. The dirt work is gonna be about four and a half months, and after that, you should start seeing construction of, of the building.
Very good. I don't think anybody's excited for your courthouse. Well, after the last, uh, well, my first couple of months of being chairman, I cannot wait for that new courthouse to get here. Don't want no electricity going off, don't want to have to hunt heat. Thank you, Commissioner Bone. Commissioner Childress?
Yes, sir. I did not see this in the consent agenda, so, uh, uh, last night I informed that I wanted to ask for a resolution for emergency hire. Temporary emergency hire, thank you.
Just temporary.
Part-time, limited to less than, uh, twenty-eight hours, equal to or less than twenty-eight hours per week, at a tech-two level of compensation, and the monies are within the budget.
Okay, you're making that an informal motion?
That is, I'm asking for a resolution, formal motion, that's correct.
Okay.
I'll second his temporary motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Childress to, for a temporary hire for the animal shelter for a tech-two.
What does a tech-two do?
It's, it's just a level of pay. Tech, tech-two is just, uh, basically a, a labor that's not a tech-one in, within the system. I, I can't. I thought we had to create the position first, but yes, I would recommend, uh, Steve Chastain for that temporary, part-time emergency hire.
Uh, who seconded that? And was there any objections to him adding that? No objections, then okay, that'll be added to the motion. All right, any other questions? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed?
I abstain.
And Commissioner Billingsley abstains. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Childress?
Um, I did, um, last night, um, make a statement that the, the shelter is, is, uh, is, we're, we're climbing out of a hole, and, uh, our new director is, uh, making the changes that we've asked her to make. Um, there have been many people down there that have volunteered their time, Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Williams. Uh, and wanna thank y'all for that. The, the Road Department has sent, uh, people over to take care of some stuff, and, um, uh, Mr. Chastain has volunteered his time and equipment down there. We're, we're making a lot of progress, and things are, uh, are coming around. Uh, I did mention that I'm receiving quotes. I had another one come in today, so I'm, I'm looking on, uh, for two more, and then we should, I should be able to report to the Commission on which way that we, I think we should go. And, um, hopefully, we'll do that by next meeting.
Very good. Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
I just had a comment I wanted to make to, uh, James Robert in the farmers last night. I didn't get a chance to say anything. I, I, uh, had the opportunity to be, visit Perry George in that, that farm center when we didn't get it here, and I've always been passionate about the, uh, cattle barn out there when I went to, um, the fairs as a kid. And as I tell everybody, the only place that we could eat, my parents would let us eat, was inside the extension. We couldn't eat fair food, uh, because of cleanliness and all those things, and we would look at animals. So, um, just wanted to let you know, I am in support, and I know some of them said they would be on the board, and hopefully, I may be able to, uh, participate as well, uh, because there are ideas that, uh, you know, I thought of, and, uh, we want to keep that maintained, and believe it not, I received several phone calls because a lot of people say, "You don't say anything." I said, "Well, I listen," um, because I want to know what I'm talking about first, by mouth. But, um, yes, and not to tear, tear the building down. I think that was intention of, not my intention or no one on the board's intention, so, uh, we're a family that, that means a lot. intention, so, uh, we remember that. That means a lot. We don't need to lose anything else in Chilton County.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Hall, anything else? Okay, Commissioner Headley?
I ain't really getting at my, uh, what, y'all table the thing on the new truck and down to the bottom, uh, we've surplus, what are they gonna be walking till we do something different, or you think y'all need to take that surplus off, or I don't, I don't know why you
That's a good question.
Tabled it, but, you know, just, I don't think we need to surplus that one if, if, uh, if there's some question about what we're gonna do right now.
How would we handle it?
It says that you can surplus it. It doesn't say when, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Didn't catch that. I mean, Commissioner Headley. Uh, Commissioner Perkins?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, one thing real quick I wanted to do was give an update and a reminder about, uh, the Alabama severe weather preparedness, sales tax holiday. Uh, you know, one of our first, um, actions as a commission was to accept that and include Chilton County in this. Uh, it's February, should be February twenty-first and twenty-third, so that'd give everybody time to get their adjustments made as far as retailers go and, and so forth and so on. But to also remind the citizens that, um, this will be one of the first times that Chilton County itself is participating in this. Uh, I do know from the list so far, St. Clanton is participating, and the city of Mapleville is participating. And what it does is severe weather preparedness. I'm sure it'd come back up for as far as back-to-school holiday also. But, um, you know, it, it affects items like extension cords and double-A batteries and Noah Weather radios and fire extinguishers and certain generators and things like that. So it gives our citizens a way to, um, you know, utilize their, their money here and stay, you know, keep it, you know, shop local some. So just give that update with the, with the date. And then I'm also asking, uh, for a resolution to change the hours at Manuka Park, uh, to nine to five, seven days a week, which would be a change, uh, October through March, and then eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week, April through September, and the riding trails will be closed on Mondays and Tuesdays for maintenance, but the park would remain open. All functions of the park would remain open other than the trails. So I'm asking for that.
Resolution?
Making that a resolution.
All right, resolution from Commissioner Perkins, changing the hours and days of operation at Manuka Park. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bone. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed? And
I didn't oppose.
Oh, you did that to me the other day. Oh, it passes unanimously. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the discussion last night was a good discussion, I think, even during the meeting and after the meeting, and a lot of it before the meeting about the tearing down and selling the components of the cattle barn, and that was not the intention of it being put on there, but it was what was said, and I liked the participation we had from multiple, uh, individuals last night in favor of. So when we, before we left, Commissioner Headley and Commissioner Billingsby indicated interest to be on this body. I'm not gonna call it a committee because we're just gonna knock some ideas around, and I asked Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner, uh, James Robert Parnell to be part of it, Tommy Brown and Ronnie Childers, and today I called Lucy Ellington.
Ellington.
I'll get her new name, last name soon, uh, to be part of this, and she agreed because some of the ideas are gonna encompass what she does in this county. So I'm all, I'll talk to James Robert after the meeting, and we'll get some ideas, some dates, and at some point, we'll bring, uh, Sylvia and McKeesha in as our administrator and assistant administrator when we start talking money. And that's all I got to report on that. And on animal control, uh, I too wanted to commend Commissioners Hall and Childers for their work down there, Steve Chastain for what he's done down there, and I think we have to run him off every day, get him to go home.
Just about.
Uh, he has done, well, we can never repay him for what he's done, but there's one person that I wanted, I did not commend at the last meeting, and it's bothered me since I did not. Now, most of you know the kind of love-hate relationship myself and former Commissioner Jimmy Hardy had. Now, we'd get into it pretty heated, and we didn't agree on most things. But what he has done in the last couple of months, that's the only thing I can testify to, at that animal shelter, has been above and beyond. So anybody that wants to say anything about him, don't say it around me, for that matter, because he has done what he's been asked of Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Childers to do for the benefit of that shelter and them animals. And I say again, it was in terrible shape, and this young lady we've hired, if anybody tries to run her off, I think she'll have seven commissioners, and I don't know how many volunteers that'll be behind her, keeping her here, because she is a jewel. So that's all I've got to say about the animal shelter. Uh, and the next thing is, I need a resolution to authorize me to sign the offer letters for the property at Manuka Park.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins. Second, Commissioner Bone. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. And
Now, how many actors?
One hundred and sixty.
One sixty.
Uh, need a motion to approve payment to Enoch.
Suspense, suspend rule.
Do we need to suspend rules on this?
Um, Enoch, yes, but you also don't forget the pound services contract and all of your
Oh, yes. I put them under my binder. Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. Before we go on that, I go back up to animal control. Uh, we have a pound services contract that we need to approve. I think each of you have a copy of it. That will be a contract between the county, animal shelter, and each municipality. Uh, can I have a motion to accept this contract?
I make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, second. Second, Commissioner Childers. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. And we have a waiver, and it's a general waiver for volunteers at any, uh, place that I guess we choose to have volunteers to do work for the county, and I need a motion to accept this, uh, waiver form as it's written.
I so moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall. Second.
You got a second?
I do.
Okay. Um,
Didn't we have a second?
This particular one is specific?
She made a motion, you, you seconded it.
This one is specific to?
No, we just, we changed it.
Okay.
Yeah, we changed it. I'm sorry. I didn't give you the changed copy. I'm sorry, was a little busy. Yeah, we, uh, got, we're in on it, and we changed that.
Just so that everyone knows, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of stuff that came at us within the last hour, that, so we seemed a little disorganized because a lot of stuff came at us at the last hour.
Uh, actually, in the last ten minutes prior to the meeting started, so I apologize for being more scattered than normal. Uh, so I have a motion and a second to approve the waiver. Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Okay, now, uh, need to, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
For motion, Commissioner Child, second by Commissioner Perkins to suspend the rules. All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed? Uh, the rules are suspended. These invoices are for the architects' drawings for the new animal control building. We can't go forward with any fundraising or anything until we get these approved, and we need to get this man paid for the work he's done. And the amount is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cents, and it is in the budget. So, uh, is it proper to go back to regular sessions since we've, after we've finished discussing this, or can we just have the motion to take action?
When you say go back to regular session?
Yeah, go back and act on this motion, the motion for the paying invoices.
I'm sorry, so you're, you're asking, can, can you go?
Do we need a motion after we finish the discussion to go back into regular session, or do we not just go into?
Oh, no, you just, you can.
Okay, I thought so. I did it the last meeting. I want to make sure I did it right. Okay, anybody got any questions, discussions on these invoices? Okay, I can have a motion to approve these invoices.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Childers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bone. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And I need a motion to approve this budget amendment as you have in front of you.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Childers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bone. Any discussions?
Is it, what's, is this an addition to the other budget? Is this just changing lines on it?
Changing the lines on it.
Okay, that's what I figured.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. All opposed? And there is no opposition, passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Motion, Commissioner Bone. Second, Commissioner Childers. All in favor, raise your hand.